You call the roll.
Mr. Gray.
President.
Ms. James.
Yes.
Mr. Lane.
Here.
Mr. McCord.
Here.
Mr. Maloney.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Dr. Stevens.
President.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stinnett.
Mr. Beard.
Present.
Mr. Blevins.
Here.
Mr. Blues.
Here.
Ms. Crosby. Mr. DeCamp. Mr. Ellinger. Ms. Gordon.
Present.
We have a quorum. It's my pleasure now to call on Pastor Chuck Cooper from the Daybrook Community Church to come forward and give our invocation. Please stand.
Let's pray together. Father, we thank you for living in a country like this where we can come and be a part of decision-making. We thank you for life itself. We thank you for the rain that we received this past week that we desperately needed. We thank you for a wonderful opportunity to live in a city like Lexington, central Kentucky. Father, we think of other communities across our country who are dealing with some great problems right now, especially to the north of us. We pray for those cities and their leaders and the people, that you would give them grace as they deal with disasters and situations that they're dealing with. Father, we think of our own community as we remember the anniversary of Comer Air Flight 5191 and pray for the service this weekend that will remember. We pray for the families and the friends of almost every one of us has some connection, and we pray for these families this weekend. Father, we pray for the mayor and this council. We realize, Lord, that leadership comes with responsibility, and we pray you'd help them realize the responsibility that they have as decision-makers in this community. Like any leaders, whether they be pastors or community leaders, government leaders, we will stand and answer to you for the decisions that we make and help these leaders realize that they will stand before you and answer to you for the decisions they make. I pray you'd bless them this evening. Grant them servants' hearts to want to serve. Give them wisdom and discernment for this meeting tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Pastor Cooper. Minutes of a couple of prior meetings have been circulated. Is there a motion for their approval?
Move approval.
Have a motion and second. Any discussion? Those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us now down to the presentations, and the first one we have tonight is on the summer youth program. And I am... There's Commissioner Helm. If you will step up to the podium, please.
Mayor Newberry and Urban County Council, I'd like to introduce, in a group, if I will, the wonderful... some of the wonderful employers that helped us to employ close to 200 youth this summer and give them an opportunity to earn and to learn. We just finished a celebration down in the ballroom where we heard testimony from youth and parent about how much this program had meant to them. So I ask you this evening to recognize these employers, and I would ask that they stand and be recognized by the council at this time. Will all the summer youth employers for 2007 please stand?
Commissioner Helm, if you'll stand by for just a second here. I want to add my own words of appreciation to those of you who are here this evening representing those employers. Your willingness to participate in the summer youth employment program provided a number of wonderful opportunities for a lot of kids in our community. We had somewhere in the neighborhood of 180 participants this year, and I've heard countless stories of how well the summer went for them, and all of that is attributable to your roles being willing to take them into your shops, your stores, your offices, and I'm very, very grateful for the time that you spent with them this summer. I should also say a word of thanks to Commissioner Helm and the folks on her staff, especially I see Priscilla Gale back there, Matty Morton, Stephanie. You all did a marvelous job pulling together the program. We had about a 50 percent increase in the number of students who participated this year, and from all accounts, it went off very, very smoothly. So thank you all for all that you did. While you're here, Commissioner Helm, I would appreciate your... send just a brief word about the Social Services Needs Assessment that's coming up next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. Next Tuesday, we've invited the community to join us in a community conversation to really take a very comprehensive and careful reflection on the social service needs of our community. We want to make sure that Lexington is not only a great community, but an exceptional community, and we have asked a number of people to come together and to work on six teams, looking at things such as housing, adults, youth, senior programming. We're providing transportation from seven different sites across the community. We're also providing childcare, providing light refreshments because we are holding this during the dinner hour, and so I certainly invite you to come as well. We're asking providers, users of the service, and community members because we believe that this is important for our community, to identify those social service issues that need to be raised so that we can go forward with the strategic plan and ensure that our community is providing the services that our residents deserve. So if you will join me, hopefully, on Tuesday, August 28th, 5:30 to 7:30, at First Baptist Brechtown, right across from Masterson Station Park.
Thank you very much. This is a very significant effort for the social service agencies in our community, and I appreciate your willingness to get everybody together. Hope everyone can attend. The next item on the agenda is a matter that I will defer to Councilmember McCord.
It is with great honor and privilege that I stand before you today with another championship team in these chambers, and over the last two and a half years, I've had the distinct pleasure and privilege of introducing our community via G3 and our council to young folks in our community that are winning large, large titles. And it is my pleasure tonight to have the Dunbar State Championship baseball team in the house. And what we're going to do, guys, is I'm going to read a proclamation from the mayor. Each one of you all will get this to take home. When I mention your name, a little bit later on down here, it's going to be in alphabetical order. If the first one would just stand up here, we'll all take a picture after it's over with, and Coach, I'd ask you to come up after I get done and make whatever comments you'd like about this team and this year, okay? "A commemoration hailing and commending the 2007 KHSAA State Baseball Champions, the Paul Lawrence Dunbar Baseball Team. Whereas the varsity baseball team from Paul Lawrence Dunbar High School, with an overall record of 38 wins and six losses, successfully accomplished their goal of becoming the 2007 KHSAA State Champions by defeating Shelby County with a score of 10 to 1 to capture the top title in front of a crowd of 4,467 spectators, down to the last one. Whereas the 2007 KHSAA State Baseball Champs were ranked third nationally in the Midwest Division of Sports Illustrated dot com regional rankings, and whereas Tyler Back, Chad Krueger, and Casey Lucchese..."
Lucchese.
Lucchese, thank you. "...were selected to the All Tournament Team, and Chris Wood was named Tournament MVP, and whereas Thomas Royce, who recorded his second win of the state tournament and received the tournament's Most Outstanding Athlete Award, and whereas center fielder Chris Wood received national attention as one of the USA Today's Player of the Week, and whereas head coach Mickey Marshall was named the 2007 Coach of the Year, and whereas the Paul Lawrence Dunbar Bulldog Baseball Team has been featured in numerous newspapers, received recognition on many television stations, and additional mentions in the National Magazine. Now, therefore, the council of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government, on behalf of all Fayette Countians, commemorates the 2007 KHSAA State Baseball Champions, the Paul Lawrence Dunbar Bulldogs as follows. Section 1. That the members of the Paul Lawrence Dunbar Baseball Team, Trey Anderson, Tyler Back, Chase Ballinger, Matt Bracken, Josh Burke, Dylan Butts, Brandon Eggersweller... How's that? Close enough? Kevin English, David Giuliani, Andrew Heim, Ryan Heim, Drew Hillard, Tyler Jones, Chad Krueger, Chris Coobyjack, Casey Lucchese, Chandler Lyles, Chad Martin, Chad Ritchie, Thomas Royce, Eugene Bubba Strunk, Joey Thompson, Tom Travis, John West, Brad Williams, Chris Wood, Cameron Young, and Alex Wade are hereby commended for their championship efforts. Section 2. The coaches Mickey Marshall, Steve Deaton, Eric Grubb, Seth Knight, Bart Rudy..."
Rutger.
Rutger, thank you. And the...
Sir Janis.
Sir Janis. You're killing me. "...be congratulated for their dedication in creating strong athletes, fostering team success, and instilling a spirit of excellence and achievement this 23rd day of August 2007. Signed, Jim Newberry." And, guys, job well done. Can we give them a round of applause?
I had a second sheet here, and I'm not going to go through all the names, but it's interesting, a couple of interesting stats. Do you realize there are 12 members of the Dunbar Baseball Team that are playing in college right now, this 2007 year?
12 members are now in college playing baseball. Of the All-City selections, there were 10 of you guys that made All-City, first, second, or third team. There were three folks that made either first or second-team All-State, and we had two others that were honorable mention. And so, again, congratulations, guys, and I think that Lexington is seeing an immense wave of talent in our baseball ranks, as the 12-year-olds from South Lexington just won the World Series last week, and you're seeing what happens a little bit later on, and congratulations. Coach?
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the council for inviting us and recognizing the accomplishment of these young men. These young men really do put a lot of effort into baseball, and they represent the city of Lexington very well, and we're very proud of them. They start in September, and it's really nice to see at the end of it all being the last team standing. Lexington is rich in talent, and to be able to come through this town and still be standing at the end is just a great accomplishment, and it's just a tribute to how hard they work. So we appreciate the honor. We hope we get to see you again next year. And if you are ever free, please come out to a Dunbar baseball game, where I'm sure you're going to enjoy yourself a lot. So thank you a lot.
Thank you all very much. Congratulations, and best wishes next season.
In connection with the bond issue associated with Anchor Baptist Church, I'm advised that we are required by federal law to conduct a public hearing with regard to those bonds. And so I'll open the floor now for anyone who might wish to comment with regard to that particular matter. Seeing none, we'll adjourn the public hearing. Thank you all very much for being here, those of you who are representing Anchor Baptist Church. I'm sorry we had to go through that formality, but federal law being federal law, I'm glad we're able to wrap that up for you. Have a good evening. Councilmember Ellinger, I understand you have a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that ordinance number one relating to the zone change for property located at 225 Walton Avenue, be removed from the dock and scheduled for a public hearing at the special meeting on September 18th, 2007, at 5:00 p.m. So moved.
Second.
For the motion and second, is there any discussion? Those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. With that matter having been handled, I think we're now ready for the second reading of the ordinance. It's Madam Clerk.
An ordinance permitting Article 15683 of the zoning ordinance to allow an existing accessory structure to remain at its current location when a principal residential structure is expanded to project past the front wall of that accessory structure in a residential zone, provided that the accessory structure is at least 18 inches from any adjoining property line. Number three. An ordinance permitting certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and re-appropriating funds, Schedule Number 31. Number four. An ordinance permitting Section 215 of the Code of Ordinances, reorganizing the Division of Risk Management as follows. Fallacy one position of risk manager of grade 119E, reallocating two positions of risk manager from grade 119E to grade 120E. Fallacy one position of contract specialist, grade 118E, and creating one position of attorney, senior, grade 121E. Fallacy one position of exposure analyst, grade 114E, and creating one position of risk management analyst, grade 115E. Fallacy one position of accountant, grade 113E, and creating one position of risk management accountant, grade 114E. Fallacy one position of administrative specialist, grade 110N, and creating one position of administrative specialist, senior, grade 112N, and reclassifying the incumbents in the Division of Risk Management to become effective retroactive to March 5, 2007, and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 41. Number five. An ordinance authorizing direct to the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a claim request form for reimbursement amount of $4,106 in the Commonwealth of Kentucky Department for Environmental Protection for removal of underground storage tanks and further authorizing direct to the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute future such claim request forms during fiscal year 2008, not to exceed a total amount of $36,500, and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 39. Number six. An ordinance authorizing direct to the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant in Kentucky Justice and Public Safety Cabinet, which grant funds are in the amount of $110,000 federal funds, are for continuation of the Street Sales Drug Enforcement Project, the acceptance of which obligates Urban County Government with expenditure of $36,670 as a local match. Appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 32, and authorize the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number seven. An ordinance approving and adopting a program amendment for use of community development block grant funds in the 2007 consolidated plan to establish a new project, the rehabilitation of the Russell Elementary School 201, West Fifth Street, for the Russell School Community Service Center, $200,000. Appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 33, and authorize the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number eight. An ordinance authorizing direct to the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant in Kentucky Justice and Public Safety Cabinet, which grant funds are in the amount of $35,000 Commonwealth Kentucky funds from the Law Enforcement Service Fee Program, for police officer overtime hours for traffic alcohol patrol program, and the acceptance of which does not obligate Urban County Government with expenditure of funds. Appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 34, and authorize the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number nine. An ordinance authorizing direct to the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit grant application to the Kentucky Justice and Public Safety Cabinet to provide any additional information requests in connection with this grant application, and to accept this grant if the application is approved, which grant funds are in the amount of $75,000 federal funds, are for continuation of the Motor Carrier Safety Assistance Program, the acceptance of which obligates Urban County Government with expenditure of $18,750 as a local match. Appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 35, and authorize the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 10. An ordinance authorizing direct to the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the National Association of Police Athletic Activities League, Inc., to provide any additional information requests in connection with this grant application, and to accept this grant if the application is approved, which grant funds are in the amount of $6,500 and are for expansion of the Lexington Police Activities League football program, the acceptance of which does not obligate Urban County Government with expenditure of funds, appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 36, and authorize the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 11. An ordinance authorizing direct to the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Department of Juvenile Justice to provide any additional information requests in connection with this grant application, and to accept this grant if the application is approved, which grant funds are in the amount of $92,140 federal funds, are for continuation of the Tru-ency Assessment Center Project, the acceptance of which obligates Urban County Government with expenditure of $46,464 as a local match. Appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 38, and authorize the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 12. An ordinance authorizing direct to the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute agreements with the city of Richmond and the Madison County Fiscal Court for services under the 2006 Project Safe Neighborhood Program, at a cost not to exceed $8,217 for the city of Richmond, and $8,216 for the Madison County Fiscal Court, and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 37.
If I could interrupt for just a moment. I think we have some motions from Councilmember Gordon with regard to the next four items on the agenda. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Mayor. These all relate to the setting of the tax rates, and 13, 14, and 16 had technical... some technical glitches. One was the year, and two were missing the non-commercial watercraft, which was to have been included. So... and then 15 were needing to pull off the docket because it needs to go with the other three. Number 13. I move to amend 13 under second reading ordinances relating to the levying of ad valorem taxes for the support of the Agricultural Extension Office to add an assessment for non-commercial watercraft. This is a material change and requires a new first reading. Second reading of this ordinance will occur at the special meeting of Urban County Council scheduled for August 28th, 2007.
Sir, have a motion and second, any discussion? Those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Councilmember Gordon.
I move to amend item 14 under second reading ordinances relating to the levying of ad valorem taxes for the support of the Fayette County Health Department to add an assessment for non-commercial watercraft. This is a material change and requires a new first reading. Second reading of this ordinance will occur at the special meeting of the Urban County Council scheduled for August 28th, 2007.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
I move to amend item 15 under second reading of ordinances that it be removed from the docket and placed on the docket at the August 28th, 2007 special meeting.
I have a motion and second, any discussion? Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
And finally, I move to amend item 16 under second reading of ordinances relating to the levying of ad valorem taxes to correct a typographical error relating to the assessment date. This is a material change and requires a new first reading. Second reading of this ordinance will occur at the special meeting of the Urban County Council scheduled for August 28th, 2007.
We have a motion and second, any discussion? Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That being the case, if I understand correctly, we're through with our second readings. Is that correct?
I need to give these first reading before we move on, so that they... the three that were amended, to give them a new first reading, and then they'll go on to second reading next Tuesday.
Before we vote on the ones that just received second reading?
That would... that would work, to do it that way. That'd be great, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I normally give them first reading now, and then...
Okay, that's fine.
And then they're just pulled until the special meeting, so if that works for everyone, I'll go ahead and do that. Number 13. An ordinance levying ad valorem taxes for purposes of support of the Agricultural Extension Office for the fiscal year July 1, 2007, through June 30, 2008, on the assessed value of all taxable real and personal property within the taxing jurisdiction of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government. All taxes on each $100 of assessed valuation as of the January 1, 2007 assessment date as follows. Point 0031 on all taxable real property, including real property of public service companies. Point 0034 on taxable personal property, including personal property of public service companies. Non-commercial aircraft and non-commercial watercraft, and excluding inventory and transit, insurance capital, tobacco and storage, and agricultural products and storage. And levying an ad valorem tax for purposes of support of the Agricultural Extension Office at the rate of point 0032 on each $100 of assessed value on all motor vehicles and watercraft within the taxing jurisdiction of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government as of the January 1, 2008 assessment date. Number 14. An ordinance pursuant to a request received from the Lexington Fayette County Health Department, levying an ad valorem tax for purposes of support of the Lexington Fayette County Health Department for the fiscal year July 1, 2007, through June 30, 2008, on the assessed value of all taxable real and personal property within the taxing jurisdiction of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government, including real and personal property of public service companies, non-commercial aircraft, non-commercial watercraft, and inventory and transit, and excluding insurance capital, tobacco and storage, and agricultural products and storage, at the rate of point 028 on each $100 of assessed values of the January 1, 2007 assessment date, and levying an ad valorem tax for purposes of support of the Lexington Fayette County Health Department, at the rate of point 028 on each $100 of assessed value, on all motor vehicles and watercraft within the taxing jurisdiction of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government as of the January 1, 2008 assessment date. And number 16. An ordinance levying ad valorem taxes for municipal purposes for the fiscal year July 1, 2007, to June 30, 2008, on the assessed value of all taxable property within the taxing jurisdictions of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government. All taxes on each $100 of assessed valuation as of the January 1, 2007 assessment date as follows. General Services District, point 0800 on real property, including real property of public service companies. Point 0990 on personal property, including personal property of public service companies. Non-commercial aircraft and non-commercial watercraft. Point 1500 on insurance capital. Point 0150 on tobacco and storage, and point 0450 on agricultural products and storage. Full Urban or commercial Urban Services Districts based on urban services available on real property, including real property of public service companies. Point 1590 for refuse collection. Point 0210 for streetlights. Point 0094 for street cleaning. Point 0920 on insurance capital. Point 0150 on tobacco and storage. Point 0450 on agricultural products and storage, and levying an ad valorem tax for municipal purposes at the rate of point 0880 on each $100 of assessed value on all motor vehicles and watercraft within the taxing jurisdiction of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government as of the January 1, 2008 assessment date.
The floor is now open for a motion to approve items 2 through 12.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote by roll call and electronically.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Mr. Maloney?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Dr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Stinnett?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Aye.
Ordinances 2 through 12 then are adopted, and Madam Clerk, if you'll proceed to the first reading.
An ordinance permitting certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and re-appropriating funds, Schedule Number 43. Number 18. An ordinance deleting Section 3-9.1 through 3-9.3 of the Code of Ordinances, which provide that establishments meeting certain requirements could apply for a special Sunday sale retail drink license to sell alcohol during limited hours on Sunday, and for extended hours supplemental sales licenses for certain establishments to sell additional hours. An amending Section 3-21 of the Code of Ordinances to write that the selling, giving away, or delivering of distilled spirits and wine by the drink shall be prohibited between the hours of 2:30 a.m. and 11 a.m. on a Sunday, between the hours of 2:30 a.m. and 6 a.m. on a Monday, and between the hours of 2:30 a.m. and 6 a.m. on any day from Tuesday through Saturday. That the selling, giving away, or delivering of malt beverages shall be prohibited between the hours of 2:30 a.m. and 11 a.m. on a Sunday, between the hours of 2:30 a.m. and 6 a.m. on a Monday, and between the hours of 2:30 a.m. and 6 a.m. on any day from Tuesday through Saturday.
between the hours of 2:30 a.m. and 6 a.m. on any day from Tuesday through Saturday. And that the selling, giving away, or delivery of retail packaged distilled spirits and wine shall be prohibited between the hours of 2:30 a.m. and 1 p.m. on a Sunday, between the hours of 9 p.m. on a Sunday and 6 a.m. on a Monday, and between the hours of 2:30 a.m. and 6 a.m. on any day from Tuesday through Saturday. That any commercial airport may apply for special extended hours license to extend its hours of sale through 4 a.m. on any day of the week. That no premises shall sell, give away, or deliver alcoholic beverages of any kind on primary regular election days during the hours that the polls are open. That a premises must obtain the appropriate types of licenses in order to lawfully sell, deliver, or give away alcohol of any kind. To eliminate the term all stocks of malt beverages from the Lock Department provisions and to clarify or renumber existing subsections to be consistent with the above effect of November 1, 2007. Number 19.
Excuse me. Let me interject. I have been advised there are four individuals here who wish to speak with regard to item number 18 and like to go ahead and make that opportunity available to them now. If I read correctly, the first one who has signed is Ted or Jed Mason. Mr. Mason, if you would step to the podium and give us your residence address, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, council members, and I am Ted Mason. I live at 3908 English Oak Circle in the south end of town. And I have a couple of comments, a couple of interesting scenarios on this. As a voter in the area, I personally would like to see this amendment come to fruition. I have also had the opportunity to live away from Lexington for seven years, out of state, and become accustomed to several of the new proposed changes in the, in the laws that are here. The next thing that comes to mind is that I also represent, I'm the Executive Director of the Kentucky Grocers and Convenience Stores Associations, and quite naturally, the members of the association that I represent have an expressed interest in seeing that this resolution come forward. I would like to wholeheartedly encourage folks to consider this and that we may be able to bring this about as many other places in the country also participate. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mason. The next individual I have listed is Ms. Taylor. If you'd step to the podium.
Good evening, council members, Honorable Mayor. Thank you so much for, for airing this proposed ordinance. I'm Fran Taylor.
Thank you.
722 West High Street, Lexington, and I am speaking on behalf of the Bluegrass Hospitality Association. It's an association of hotels, attractions, supporting tourism businesses. And I wanted to remind the council members that tourism is consistently listed as the second strongest economic driver in the state and certainly in the Bluegrass region. This ordinance levels the playing field. It's currently uneven in its application related to which hotels, which businesses can or cannot serve alcohol on Sundays. It's confusing for our visitors and we're currently attracting world-class events. I remind you that the Ryder's Cup in 2008 and in the 2010, Alltech FEI World Games will be held here, and we have to treat our visitors in a world-class manner. Many of them are from foreign countries and they are, we hear often that they are shocked by the inequality in the application of our alcohol laws. So I would urge you to pass this expanded Sunday sales measure. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Next individual is Mr. Smith. If you'd step to the podium, please. And again, we'll need your full name and address, please.
My name is Wayne Smith. Live at 278 Hill and Dale and retired minister. Mine's four minutes. Is that bad that there's no offering?
If you'll commit to no offering, we'll probably work it out, Reverend Smith.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Those against Sunday sales are at a disadvantage because we did not have the opportunity to recruit others at such short notice. I was shocked when I read the paper yesterday, learning that you already had voted. In past years, we had sufficient prior notice. Secondly, I'm at a disadvantage because the vote has been taken, and I question how many, if any, would change their vote. I'm surprised that city leaders who voted against smoking could possibly vote for alcohol. I've been in the ministry 58 years, and I've never had a divorce because of smoking. Smoking was a health issue and this is not. It's mainly a money issue for conventions and, as Sue Wiley said, so we can grow up. It is also a convenience issue for patrons desiring drinks with their food. It is not a level playing field because the smoking issue is over and the field was never leveled and likely will never be. I'm here tonight because expanded alcohol sales is deadly. In the 51 years that I've been in Lexington, regularly alcohol sales has always reared its head, perhaps a couple times each decade. Do you remember the last time it reared its head? We wanted to make the deadline for the bars not only 1 o'clock but 4 o'clock to copy Louisville so that the drunks would have three more hours to go home. And, and we closed at 1 o'clock and as Will Rogers said, "If you can't get drunk by 1 a.m., you ain't really trying." The excuse varies. Why, this is the last time we're going to do this, and here we are again. I hope you will consider the following when giving your final vote. The Herald Leader, front page, January the 12th, 1997, records indicate the DUIs rise when sales are allowed. Now, you have voted for more opportunities for sales, thus, we're going to have more of a problem. Nine times as many alcoholics today as there is cancer patients. At a Christian Life Conference in New North Carolina, it was reported 83% of the admissions to the Baptist Children Home have not lost their parents in death, but rather to broken homes with alcohol. Alcohol is the number one killer of people under 25 years of age. Shakespeare said, "What fools men are to put this demon in their mouth to steal their brains away."
Reverend Smith, you have about 25 more seconds, even with the four minutes.
Okay. I'm not sure what you said, but...
I said you have about 25 more seconds under the four-minute limit.
I, I'm not happy that you, I would think that people coming all the way down here would have an opportunity to... One out of eight families in America in the next two years will have one or more members killed or maimed in an accident involving alcohol. Well, let me close by quoting Our Heavenly Father in Proverbs 23, verses 29 through 32. Whose heart is filled with anguish and sorrow? Who's always fighting and quarreling? Who's the man with the bloodshot eyes and many wounds? It is the one who spends long hours in taverns trying out various mixtures. Don't let the sparkle and the smooth taste of strong wine deceive you, for in the end it bites like a poisonous serpent, and it stings like an admiral. Some of you are going to say, "Wayne, I know you. You're full of humor. This doesn't sound like you." I'm, I'm extreme on alcohol, but I'm also not only extremist, but a realist. And I know the result of alcohol more than anyone in this council because I've been a preacher for 58 years. I've seen the heartache. I've seen the little children that no longer have a daddy and spouse abuse. And for you all to give a greater opportunity, the only people happy are the convention people. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Smith. Next person I have on the list to speak is David McCracken. Mr. McCracken, if you give us your address and step to the podium, you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Right. David McCracken, 420 North Picadon. I'm here representing our church, Lafayette Church of Nazarene, as well as myself. I have a writing that somebody can hand out to the, I don't know if anybody does that. I'll essentially read this. I'm talking here about the bottom line of this proposal. Has anyone on this council taken the time to evaluate the true gains and losses of this proposal? That is, the bottom line. The city, the state, the federal government gain some additional revenue. Have you considered the cost to the city, state, federal, insurance suits, individuals? For every dollar of revenue gain, for every dollar of revenue gain, how many dollars will be spent out because of the problems generated by alcohol consumption? It's an astronomical loss for our city, state, the insurance, the federal, individuals. Let's start with the loss of life. How much do you figure on the death of a child, a youth, a mother, a dad, and so on, as we have in the Herald Leader, and it's almost every day, front page, "UK Seeks Answers to Student Drinking," inside the young people that have died in the last six years because of alcohol just at UK alone. It's a great problem over there. It's a great problem for our city. Seven students in the past five years are dead because of alcohol. Think of the crimes committed, the damage done to lives and property, the homes that are ravaged by alcohol, the insurance hospitals, suit costs that soar, the ongoing rehabilitation of these addicted and affected by alcohol, and the cost goes on and on. Can you sit here as a city leader and have responsibility for this vote on expanded alcohol sales on Sunday and feel that this decision will better our community? It might take care of the Europeans and the Swiss and the Africans and the Indians and all that come in to visit us, but how about our own community? It's absolutely unwise, as the Bible says, to expand alcohol sales. Everyone loses. Everyone loses but the liquor industry. They will receive clear profit. Could this council be liable for their actions on this issue? Yes, I'm a minister, but I do not oppose this proposal on Bible wisdom, but I do not need the Bible wisdom, I do oppose the proposal on Bible wisdom, but I do not need the Bible wisdom to understand the tragedy and destruction alcohol consumption brings on this community. It's obvious as a nose on your face unless you buried it in the sand. I plead with you as council members, do not bring upon us, the City of Lexington, any additional plagues caused by alcohol consumption. Give us at least one day of rest. Give us at least one day of rest. The next victim could be you or one of your family members. You may be signing up to join MAD in the near future. Do I understand correctly, a doctor on this council proposed this idea?
Thank you, Mr. McCracken. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on item 18? Yes, sir. If you would step to the podium and give us your name and residence address, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? All right.
My name is Edward McCracken. I live at 3113 Cherry Meadow Path, Lexington, Kentucky. I'm in opposition to this ordinance change to allow a sale of liquor on Sunday. And the reason, quite frankly, is very analogous to the same reasoning that you would use for banning cigarette smoking in establishments. And yes, I know that we are not voting on whether or not we're going to allow drinking or not, but we are expanding that. I agree with what has been said in terms of, of, of the generation of more problems rather than the recession of these problems. We will be generating more problems, and I don't think that that's good for our community. It's not something that I would want to, to put upon my children or your children or any of your relatives or yourself. We're certainly aware of statistics, and most of us who certainly have a mind to reason and logic, we know that statistics, if they're done right, mean something. And these statistics are in favor of not allowing any more. Sell liquor certainly not on Sunday. And I certainly agree with those in the community who are Bible believers and Christians who are offended by this. And as, as has been said already, even the Bible says there's to be one day of rest, and that is what Christians believe, one day of worship, one day set aside. Why can't we leave it that way? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And if there's anyone else who wishes to speak, please let us know. But sir, if you'll just state your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Jim Blakeman, 4934 Heartland Parkway. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to know about the evils of alcohol, and they far outweigh any benefits. The only benefits I can think of is it makes a few people rich, manufacturers and dealers. But alcohol is plenty available, and please, council members, don't make it more available. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blakeman. Unless there is someone else who wishes to speak, we'll proceed with the next item on the, oh, I'm sorry. Council Member Myers, you wish to speak on item 18?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I want to say that I have some concerns about the process at which this is moving forward. And I want to start by saying that the iteration of this proposed ordinance that we received on Tuesday had not gone through the law department for proper vetting. And I realize that they sent an email out today that said that there are some things that they can work through that they don't, that's not really an issue necessarily. I still think that that's part of the process that we should uphold to. And secondly, I think that there's been some concerns raised from ABC and others in the police department about their ability to administer this proposed ordinance, depending on the date that it starts, if it passes. And I think that that's something that we need to hear from them on and hear what their input is and see what, if there's a solution to fix that problem. And also, this issue was in committee, it actually still is in committee, and I think that our normal process is that when things go through committee, they go through committee. And I would like to see this issue complete its work in committee, allow our committee system to do its due diligence, let ABC and the police department come through and talk about the issues and concerns that they may have and if there are solutions to those. And I say that Dr. Stevens provided excellent leadership to our community when he moved forward the smoking ban. And I think with respect to his ability to do that, that we would respectfully move this from the docket until the committee so works it through and finishes it work. And I will wait to make that motion until after Councilman Stitt speaks.
Councilmember Senate.
Thank you, Mayor. There's no question that this council has processes that, that we go by, whether they're written or unwritten. There's no councilor on this council now that has been sitting here for the last eight months can say that we have put an item into committee but put an ordinance forward in relation to that item without it coming out of the committee first. Now, there is no written policy that we have to go to committee first. There is no written policy that you can't bring an ordinance out if it's still in committee. That question's been asked to me as parliamentarian, that question's been asked a number of council members. So I'm not sure if that's an issue we can debate now or not, but that issue is in some type or some shape or form in committee right now. But there are very serious questions with not having heard enough public input, especially from our ABC folks and law enforcement as to this issue. I know we debated a road opening for nine council meetings in this council chambers, but yet we've had one meeting publicly regarding to alcohol sales, and, and that says a lot to our community. I think to respect the integrity of the process to this community, we need to have an open and public discussion whether, I know the answers that I'm asking questions to now, but they need to be said on this camera and on this microphone. And I would like to have either this Tuesday during our work session on this upcoming Tuesday, the 28th, a full-fledged discussion and... a full-fledged discussion and debate and hear from our ABC folks and our law department as to why they did not review the ordinance prior to today. We did not get a final draft of it on Tuesday, or I'd be glad to wait until September the 11th and do it on that work session. I know we won't be here on the Labor Day week, but either one of those Tuesdays, I think at the very minimum, to give public another chance to vent what their issues are with this proposal. And again, there was some misconception earlier tonight. This has not been voted on because this council did a verbal vote, be it... No one counted the votes Tuesday. A verbal vote does not mean that we are in favor or against the ordinance as it proposed now. That was just to put it on a docket. And simply, the docket means we have the ability now to vote it up or down, whereas we did not before. So there's still a lot of debate out there, there's still a lot of issues. And with respect to all sides of this issue, I would like to see personally, instead of taking off from first reading tonight since it's already been read, to either come back Tuesday, this upcoming Tuesday, or September the 11th to have a full-fledged debate before the council.
Councilmember Stevens?
In response to some of the issues raised, the law department and the ABC have had an input into this and have created the ordinance which you were given Tuesday and which I think is circulating now. They did make a small change since Tuesday. But I agree that the public should not be denied the right to speak at any issue at any time that is of significance. And I would support having a public meeting or hearing. I'm not sure what the... We've argued about what the difference between a hearing and a meeting is. But having a public opportunity on Tuesday, the 11th, that would be just before the vote on the 13th and I think would be more appropriate. That would be three... Almost three weeks from now that we would vote on this. So I would support it, and I would make a motion that we do place this on the agenda for the September 11th work session and schedule it such a time that people can be here to talk about it.
Second? If I understood correctly, the motion is to remove item eighteen from the docket and...
No, the motion is to leave it on the docket, but to schedule in the interim a meeting inviting the public and anybody else who wants to speak.
Okay. Appreciate the clarification there. So the motion is to schedule a meeting on September 11th during the work session to discuss item eighteen. And there were multiple seconds. Any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, I think we're ready to resume the reading of the ordinances. First reading?
Number nineteen. An ordinance pending Section 2138 of the Code of Ordinances to give employees the entire day off on Christmas Eve. Number twenty. An ordinance authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, which grant funds are in the amount $324,000 federal funds for the Traffic Signal Upgrade Project, $134,000, and the ITS Traffic Control Project, $190,000, excepted to which obligates Urban County Government for the expenditure of $81,000 as a local match, propering funds pursuant to schedule number forty-two and authorize the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. And number twenty-one. An ordinance authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute supplemental agreement number one and accept a grant with and accept a grant from Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, which grant funds are in the amount $3,655,000 federal funds, both of which are for the construction phase of Loudoun Avenue improvements project, the acceptance of which obligates Urban County Government for the expenditure of $913,750 as a local match, propering funds pursuant to schedule number forty and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget.
Are there any motions with regard to the ordinances which have just received the first reading? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the resolutions for second reading. Madam Clerk?
Mayor?
I'm sorry. Councilmember Blues?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a motion. I move that item number twenty-seven under second reading resolution be removed from the docket and that it be placed on the docket for Thursday, September 13, 2007. So moved.
The motion is to remove item twenty-seven from the docket and place it on the docket for first reading on September 13th. Is that correct, Councilmember Blues?
Yes, it is.
All right. Heard the motion, any discussion? Those in favor, please vote aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Number one. A resolution set the bid of R&amp;L Cleaning Services establishing a price contract for custodial services for the General Services Building. Number two. Resolution set the bid of R&amp;L Cleaning Services establishing a price contract for custodial services for the Operation Adjustment Center. Number three. Resolution set the bid of R&amp;L Cleaning Services establishing a price contract for custodial services for the Division Streets, Roads, and Forestry. Number four. Resolution set the bid of Education Remedies, Inc., doing business as JDC Cleaning, LLC, establishing a price contract for custodial services for police roll call training, gym, and comtech. Number five. Resolution set the bid of Pipe Eyes, LLC in the amount of $494,439.80 for the annual preventive maintenance sewer cleaning program for the Division of Water and Air Quality. Number six. A resolution set the bid of Visual Image Systems Company, LLC, establishing a price contract for reflective vehicle decals for the Division of Police. Number seven. A resolution set the bid of CM Construction in the amount of $39,700 for parking lot construction in South Point Park. Number eight. A resolution set the bids of Shively Sporting Goods and the Trophy Center establishing price contracts for trophies, plaques, and silver. Number nine. A resolution set the bid of Lagco, Inc. in the amount of $74,935 for parking lot construction at Wellington Park. Number ten. A resolution set the bids of Cumulus Broadcasting, Insight Media, WDKYTV, WKYT-TV, WLX-TV, and WTQ-TV, establishing price contracts for LFUCG marketing programs. Number eleven. A resolution set the bid of Allenett Commercial Cleaning, establishing a price contract for custodial services for the Coroner's Office. Number twelve. Resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a donation from Miss Priscilla Menard of a horse and sign in the Bill of Donation for use at the mounted patrol unit at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number thirteen. A resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit applications to the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and provide any additional information requested in connection with this application for Wolfpack Remote Viewing System under the Commercial Equipment Direct Assistance Program. Number fourteen. A resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Division of Emergency Management and provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $4,195 com with the Kentucky funds and are for the purchase of rescue equipment for the Division of Fire and Emergency Services. Number fifteen. A resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to approve payment to the Lexington Philharmonic Society for the Patriotic Concert on July 3, 2007, at a cost not to exceed $21,750. Number sixteen. A resolution pending Section 1A of Resolution Number 649, 2005, to change the references to Nichols Park to Nichols Park Drive. Number seventeen. A resolution approving the report of the audit examination of the Lexington County Government Sheriff's Settlement, 2006 taxes for taxes collected as of April 27, 2007, and granting the sheriff acquiatus. Number eighteen. A resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with GNF Break PhD for the provision of mental health services to children and families served by the Division of Youth Services at a cost not to exceed $1,000. Number nineteen. A resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute agreements with the Kenton County Commonwealth Attorney's Office and the 28th Judicial Circuit Commonwealth Attorney for services under the Project Safe Neighbors Grant Program at a cost not to exceed $22,000 for the Kenton County Commonwealth Attorney's Office and $10,000 for the 28th Judicial Circuit Commonwealth Attorney. Number twenty. A resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with the Office of the Fayette County Sheriff for the provision of services under the grants to encourage arrest policies and enforcement of protection orders program at a cost not to exceed $7,930. Number twenty-one. A resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase service agreement with Robertson Keg for the facilitation of a community needs assessment for the Department of Social Services at a cost not to exceed $6,000. Number twenty-two. A resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a group sales agreement with Hyatt Regency Lexington for the Bluegrass Invitational Wheelchair Basketball Tournament at a cost to exceed $3,000. Number twenty-three. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for control, sharing, and maintenance of camera systems for traffic management, homeland security, and Amber Alerts and rescinding the previous such agreement approved by Resolution Number 319, 2005. Number twenty-four. A resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a grant Bluegrass Regional Mental Health Mental Redarization Board, Inc., doing business as Comprehensive Care Center for mental health services for inmates at the Detention Center at a cost not to exceed $743,709.23. Number twenty-five. A resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a clinical service agreement with the University of Kentucky Chandler Medical Center for the provision of dental health services to clients of the Family Care Center at the College of Dentistry at a cost not to exceed $227,740. Number twenty-six. A resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a cost reimbursement agreement with the Federal Bureau of Investigations for reimbursement of overtime work by police officers at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number twenty-eight. A resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a clinical service agreement with the University of Kentucky Chandler Medical Center, College of Nursing, for nurse practitioner services at the Family Care Center at a cost not to exceed $320,320. And number twenty-nine. A resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amendment to agreement with Asbury College for additional funds for the creation of an anti-gang public service announcement, which is part of the 2003 Project Safe Neighbors Project at an additional cost not to exceed $11,370. Number thirty. A resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute contracts with the Lexington County Health Department for reimbursement to the Family Care Center for provision of dental health services to students attending Harrison, Johnson, Tate's Creek, and Arlington Elementary Schools at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number thirty-one. A resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute change orders to the construction contract with past respects, LLC, for the renovation of the Kaden Town School. Provided budget funds are available for change order increases. No change orders affect a materially changing the scope of the contract. No individual change order increase shall exceed $2,600. Accumulated total increase for all change orders should not exceed $10,000. And summary of all change orders so executed shall be furnished to the Urban County Council monthly. And number thirty-two. A resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute change order number one to Conoco Jarboe Construction, Inc., for gains away park community building, increasing the contract price for the sum of $7,500 from $23,250 to $30,750.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any motions with regard to the resolutions that have received their second reading? A motion to approve them would be in order? Do I have a second? I have a motion second to approve the ordinances that have now received their second reading. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. And council members, please also vote electronically.
Mr. Gray? Ms. James? Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Mr. Maloney? Mr. Myers? Dr. Stevens? Mr. Stennett? Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. Blues? Mr. Ellinger? And Ms. Gordon?
Those resolutions are adopted. We're now ready for the resolutions that are to receive their first reading. Madam Clerk?
Number thirty-three. A resolution set the bid of cloud concrete establishing a price contract for concrete items. Number thirty-four. A resolution set the bid of launch construction, LLC, in the amount of $1,371,268.99 for the Bluegrass Aspen Dell Collector Street Phase Two for the Division of Engineering. There's a motion on number thirty-five. Number thirty-five has a motion, some personnel resolution.
I'm sorry.
I've got a motion on number thirty-five. Hold on.
Councilmember Maloney? Thank you, Madam Clerk.
I move to amend number thirty-five on the docket under first reading resolution to add the unclassified civil service appointment of Mary Gonder, victim advocate in the Division of Police. So moved.
Second?
Is there any discussion? Those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Number thirty-five. A resolution ratifying probation of civil service appointments of John Angel Equipment Operator Senior, Grade 109N, 16.977 hourly in the Division of Water and Air Quality, effective August 27, 2007. Approving the unclassified civil service informant Ashari Kawashima, victim's advocate, Grade 112N, 15.080 hourly in the Division of Police, effective September 3, 2007. Mary Ann Forsyth, Life Skills Program Instructor, Grade 110E, $1,087.26 bi-weekly in the Division of Family Service, effective July 9, 2007. Margarita Roya, Eligibility Counselor, Grade 110E, $1,563.52 bi-weekly in the Division of Family Service, effective July 9, 2007. Mary Gonder, Victims Advocate, Grade 112N, 14.663 hourly in Division of Police, effective September 3, 2007. Number thirty-six. A resolution authorizing direct the Department of Law to institute condemnation proceedings in Fayette Circuit Court to obtain fee simple title to the properties located at 547 and 549 Goodlow Street, 245 and 253 Ann Street, and 528 East Third Street with the extension of Shropshire Boulevard for the Ann Street Acquisition Project. Number thirty-seven. A resolution authorizing direct the Division of Traffic Engineering pursuant to Code of Ordinances, Section 1886, to install multiway stop controls at Sixth Street and Healy Avenue. Number thirty-eight. A resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase service agreement with Lex Arts, Inc., for various services related to creative arts in Lexington, Fayette County at a cost not to exceed $500,000, $350,000 for services, and $150,000 to magic contributions. Number thirty-nine. A resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase service agreement with Roots and Heritage Festival, Inc., for the FY 2008 Roots and Heritage Festival at a cost not to exceed $43,720. Number forty. A resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Mash Services of the Bluegrass, Inc., for operation on the Mash drop-in facility at a cost not to exceed $173,458 in grant funds from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. Number forty-one. A resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Bryan Station Traditional Magnet School, PTSA, Inc., $500. North Point Neighbor Association, Inc., $500. Stonewall Community Association, Inc., $1,000. YMCA of Central Kentucky, $1,325. Lexington Opera Society, Inc., $1,525. Smithtown Neighbor Organization, Inc., $500. The Northside Neighbor Association, Inc., $550. And Jordanian Neighbor Association, Inc., $400 for the office of Urban County Council at a cost not to exceed the sum stated.
I believe there are several motions with regard to the resolutions we've just heard. Let me begin by seeing if there are any motions to add items to the docket. Councilmember Blevins?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to place on the docket under first reading resolutions a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Fayette County Sheriff for collection of the 2007 urban service district taxes. So moved.
I have a motion second. Any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, you want to read all of these at once at the end, correct? I'll move on down the list of speakers then. Councilmember Beard?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to suspend the rules and request a second reading on number forty.
If you don't mind, let me hang on to those until we get everything on for the first reading. I'll come back and pick that up. Anybody else have a motion to add additional items to the agenda for first reading? Councilmember McCord?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to place on the docket a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to accept a grant from the Commonwealth of Kentucky for funds to construct recreational trails at Higbee Mill, South Point Park, and/or Wellington Park should funds become available. So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Those in favor of adding that item to the agenda for first reading, let it be known by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Any other items to be added to the agenda? All right. Madam Clerk?
All right. Number forty-two. A resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Kathy H. Whit, Sheriff, Fayette County, for the collection of the urban service district taxes for the 2007 property tax year at a cost not to exceed $350,000 with payment net from collections. Number forty-three. A resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Commonwealth of Kentucky for funds to construct recreational trails in Higbee Mill, South Point Park, and/or Wellington Park should funds become available.
Thank you. Madam Clerk? Councilmember Beard?
Thank you again, Mayor. I would like to suspend the rules and ask for a second reading on number forty.
Are there other similar requests? I've got a list here, let me try to get in there.
I'll make it simple.
Okay.
Suspend the rule and give all of them a second reading, so moved.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion in second that all items, all of the items that have received first reading be given a second reading.
They won't be here for two weeks.
Councilmember Blevins?
I'd just like to comment that we have grown increasingly comfortable with doing second readings over and over on things that I'm not sure need it, and in the spirit of keeping our process together, we need to refrain from doing this quite so much. I won't vote against this tonight, but in the future, I'm going to start voting against doing this. I don't think it's fair to the community to not give them the two-week notice.
All right. The motion on the floor is to amend Councilmember Beard's motion so as to permit the reading of all of the ordinance, all of the resolutions that have received first reading and give them a second reading.
Second.
Any further discussion on that motion? And those in favor of the amendment to Councilmember Beard's motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries. We're now ready to vote. I suppose we'll go through the process of voting on the motion as amended, which is to now place all the items that have received first reading on the docket for a second reading. Those, any further discussion? Those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk.
Number thirty-three, a resolution set the bid of cloud concrete, establishing a price contract for concrete items. Number thirty-four, a resolution set the bid of Claunch Construction, LLC, in the amount of one million, three hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents, for the Bluegrass Aspadale Collector Street Phase Two for the Division of Engineering. Number thirty-five, a resolution ratifying the probation of civil service appointments of John Angel Equipment Operator Senior Grade One to Nine N, sixteen point nine seven seven hourly in the Division of Water and Air Quality, effective August twenty-seventh, two thousand and seven. Approving the unclassified civil service appointment of Shari Kawashima, Victims Advocate Grade One Twelve N, fifteen point zero eight zero hourly in the Division of Police, effective September third, two thousand and seven. Mary Ann Forsyth, Life Skills Program Instructor Grade One Ten E, one thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents bi-weekly in the Division of Family Services, effective July ninth, two thousand and seven. Margarita Roya, Eligibility Counselor Grade One Ten E, one thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-two cents bi-weekly in the Division of Family Services, effective July ninth, two thousand and seven. Mary Gonder, Victims Advocate Grade One Twelve N, fourteen point six six three hourly in the Division of Police, effective September third, two thousand and seven. Number thirty-six, a resolution authorizing direct the Department of Law to institute condemnation proceedings in Fayette Circuit Court to obtain fee simple title to the properties located five forty-seven and five forty-nine Goodlow Street, two forty-five and two fifty-three Anne Street and five twenty-eight East Third Street, for the extension of Sharpshire Boulevard for the Anne Street Acquisition Project. Number thirty-seven, a resolution authorizing direct the Division of Traffic Engineering pursuant to code of ordinance to section eighteen eighty-six to install multi-way stop controls at Sixth Street and Healy Avenue. Number thirty-eight, a resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase service agreement with Lex Arts, Inc., for various services related to creative arts in Lexington, Fayette County, at a cost not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for services and one hundred and fifty thousand to match contributions. Number thirty-nine, a resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase service agreement with Roots and Heritage Festival, Inc., for the FY two thousand and eight Roots and Heritage Festival at a cost not to exceed forty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. Number forty, a resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Mash Services of the Bluegrass, Inc., for operation of the Mash drop-in facility at a cost not to exceed one hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars, in grant funds from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. Number forty-one, a resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Bryan Station Traditional Magnet School, PTSA, Inc., five hundred dollars. North Point Neighbor Association, Inc., five hundred dollars. Stonewalk Community Association, Inc., one thousand dollars. YMCA of Central Kentucky, one thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Lexington Opera Society, Inc., one thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Smithtown Neighbor Organization, Inc., five hundred dollars. The Northside Neighbor Association, Inc., five hundred and fifty dollars. Enduril Neighbor Association, Inc., four hundred dollars, for the office of the Urban County Council at a cost not to exceed the sum stated. Number forty-two, a resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Kathy H. Witt, Sheriff, Fayette County, for the collection of the urban service district taxes for the two thousand and seven property tax year, at a cost not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand dollars with payment net from collections. And number forty-three, a resolution authorizing direct the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Commonwealth of Kentucky for funds to construct recreational trails in Higbee Mill, South Point Park and/or Wellington Park should funds become available.
Madam Clerk, my screen has gone blank, if that makes any difference to anybody at this stage of the proceedings.
We'll get that.
But in the meantime, it's just, it's all blank. I don't have a button. In any event, I think a motion is in order to approve the ordinance, the resolutions which have just received their second reading.
Second.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion in second that the ordinances be approved. I'd like for the clerk to call the roll and council members please vote electronically.
We'll just wait a moment to make sure with the computers. Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Ms. James.
Yes.
Mr. Lane.
Yes.
Mr. McCord.
Yes.
Mr. Maloney.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Dr. Stevens.
Aye.
Mr. Stinnett.
Aye.
Mr. Beard.
Aye.
Mr. Blevins.
Aye.
Mr. Blues.
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger.
Yes.
Ms. Gordon.
It appears the resolutions are approved. That being the case, we're ready to move on to communications from the mayor, have one for information purposes only. But this is important, hang on here for just a second, I got, I got one thing. Councilmember Gordon and Councilmember Gray and I have been discussing with some interest the fact that the only document I've seen on legal-sized papers since I've been at Urban County Government is the council docket. Would anybody have objection if we moved that on to just regular-sized papers? Is there some tradition here that escapes me? All right, we'll do that, thank you. That's all, the communications from the mayor. Are there any announcements?
There is a disciplinary action for the Division of Police.
Chief Cecil?
We have a disciplinary action on Officer Bobby, Bobby Joe Hall, for his third at-fault accident within a six-month period. Went before the disciplinary board and the disciplinary board determined that a letter of reprimand, retraining at the bureau level, and loss of home fleet privileges for four working days was in order, and it was approved by Chief Beatty also.
Move approval.
I have a motion in second that the proposed disciplinary action be approved, although there's any discussion? Those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Any further announcements? I'm advised that we have three individuals who wish to speak this evening in the public comments section. I'll just call on them in the order listed here. First one is Ms. Scobie. If you would step to the podium, you'll have three minutes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mrs. Scobie of four nine oh seven Tates Creek Road, and I have very little to say. I just wanted to say that I've given every council member a letter with three attachments, and the reason I'm giving this letter tonight is so that you can, you can have a full understanding of the, of the history of our road and, well, of the Seren Drive and Drive connection before the meeting, the work session meeting next week on Tuesday. I've also notified Mr. Lane that his office and we have emailed him and sent him a correspondence letter as well to the reasoning why we are completely opposed to this resolution, and that is really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Scobie, have you listed? Thank you very much. The last speaker I have indicated is Katie McCormick. Ms. McCormick, if you would step to the podium and give us your residence address, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Katie McCormick and I reside at six ninety-five Woodward Lane. I'm here tonight asking that this council do something about the intersection at Maple Leaf and Manowar Drive. Personally, I was injured there four years ago in an accident and I still suffer the pain of that, but nothing matches the heartache that I'm now suffering and my family is suffering because on July twenty-seventh, two thousand and seven, my son was broadsided at that intersection with his three children and the automobile. Two of those children were critically and seriously injured. The four-year-old has been in a coma for the last three, three weeks. He has two broken collar bones, a dislocated pelvis, and we don't know what the outcome is going to be because it is a very severe head injury. The eleven-year-old was trapped in the vehicle for two hours and the jaws of life was needed in order to get him out. There was a possibility at one point that he could have lost his right arm, but they were able to save the arm at the UK Children's Hospital. He will have limited mobility and use in that arm. I've talked to Councilman Stinnett, who is my councilman. I understand that the intersection is in Councilman Cosby's district. Councilman Stinnett in a conversation with me stated that there has been some investigation into that intersection and getting the light changed from a green arrow, which then goes to a green ball for a left turn, to have it changed from a green arrow to a green, to a red arrow, so that left turns can only be made on a green arrow in that intersection. This intersection has been notorious for accidents here in the community. From June of two thousand and six till June of two thousand and seven, there's been over twenty accidents in that intersection, which means they average one accident every two weeks at that intersection. It's been rated as one of the most dangerous intersections in Lexington for years. So I'm asking this governing body to work on doing this. Councilman Stinnett says the investigation has shown that it would not interfere with the flow of Manowar to do this, that it would only cause a three- to four-minute wait to make a left-hand turn off of Manowar onto Maple Leaf, and I think three to four minutes to save another family from any kind of heartache like we're going through would be well worth it and beneficial to the public for the, this council to do this. And it, it's just horrendous that this has happened. I mean, our family's completely destroyed from the West Coast to the East Coast. There's people all over the world praying for us right now and my grandson, and again, we don't know what his outcome is going to be. So if the council could please see fit to do this, it's not that hard of a fix. It's a very easy fix that can be done with limited amount of money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick. I appreciate your staying in this evening because your comments are significant and they were very well said, so thank you for your time. And Commissioner Kelly, if you could follow up and ask the folks in traffic engineering to take a hard look at that intersection, I would appreciate it. Councilmember Stinnett?
Ms. McCormick, thank you for coming down. I know we've spoken a couple of times on this issue, and traffic engineering, for council members to know, they have looked at a preliminary study on it, and we should get the full report hopefully sometime next week is when they'll be completing on their analysis of that intersection. So once it is complete, I'll put it into the services committee and bring it to the whole council. Thank you again, Ms. McCormick.
Thank you. Is there anything further to come before the council? Seeing no comments, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Have a motion in second.